I was together and at the same time transition. And ultimately institutionalized institutionalized through autonomous region that the Bangsamoro has always deserved and to fight for in our lives and limbs. I believe you have done so. So many exceeded expectations, both indeed amidst many challenges, including the pandemic. What makes it all the more exciting? It's a very challenging to have in ourselves. Continuing contributions even to our leaders. Constantly corrupt ones that ever base us and ultimately makes us remain vulnerable outside of this. But still, our accomplishment far exceeds our shortcomings. And thanks the members of parliament and our supporting secretariat. We can agree to disagree. And we can do so only if we can agree and support that it is timely moving to the next step. That is to institutionalize the Bangsamoro. We should not be undermining the work of the current regional government and pursue self-interest. Self-interest will always be part of politics, yes, but at the expense. But not at the expense of the larger whole. I can only hope and pray. But we all as leaders realize that we have to finish working on the institution we have been taught to give substance to. Then we can compete to the people's support in coming middle elections and to the coming elections. Less this call is misconstrued. I am not saying, as we cannot just say yet, that the transition is done. Our partners being incontrovertibly performed. May not be perfect again especially with challenges beyond our control. But no one can deny we have done enough of our end to the bargain. This call to be objective. Aim for the good of all and moderate self-interest is incentivized. The government of the Republic of the Philippines to complete its end of the bargain. So much more remains in the work of the Commission. Transitional justice and reconciliation. Not to mention the fundamental need for the national government and its various divisions. To respect Bangsamoro autonomy. And operationalize intergovernmental relations. Understanding the virtue of Bang as a regional and not a local government remains one thing. And this continues to be challenged especially for government agencies and divisions at the national level. If this is not addressed, the institutionalization of Bang will remain difficult to achieve, to say the least. There is no denying that this is because of chronic prejudice. All the more that it should be given priority. Until such time, national leaders are made to understand that they can no longer resort to dividing the Bangsamoro. What they had been doing since time immemorial. Allowing them to take advantage of us and feeling the fiction that we are undeborable. No amount of blood spilled will be enough for us to achieve what needs to be achieved. We will always find ourselves back to square one. Wondering why despite everything we are still where we are. One might argue the contrary, that everything is already there. As each key component is already set up. Normalization bodies are already there. The Inter Cabinet Cross-Termic Association Normalization is already there with the she-wants of executive order seventy-nine. And many will likely argue that three point five billion has already been invested since twenty nineteen for socioeconomic development, crucial especially for normalization. Still, if we look at the complete full institutionalization, it is still incomplete. Only when the Bangsamoro government is put in place, true with the birthright suffrage, it should be added. Free from throne and characterize by peaceful exercise. But we can best assure that institutionalization is no longer path from bridge. Then we have earned a pat in the back for a job well done. Until then, we will still be seen by many as continuing the labor. When the time remaining lasts as a transitional government. I suppose it would be best to aggressively make the whole country understand what bargaining is. The significance and how it has performed so far. We should face that fundamental challenge of regurgitation, heed or and disabuse our countrymen. Of the many myths and misconceptions about the Bangsamoro people. We have done so much in the first place to be proud of and declare to the rest of the country and against the world that many may appreciate more of our contributions to continue working within the bonds of the Philippines despite such inflation, feeling the missions and the struggle before. This time, we can really be proud to showcase our culture and traditions. Show the rest of the world the beauty and bounty that people says that many did not know before. Or maybe they just have the impulse to know because of the rather unfair assumption that the whole region is lonely and lacking security. Finally, we have our countrymen are able to enjoy the distinct and rich flavors and color of our food and even fashion. All of which thanks to the accomplishments of the Bang under the leadership of Sir Chief Wills Rahal Ibrahim and the support of everyone in the region. It is now time to ask our people, if indeed you have done our work. And let them choose who will take over as their representatives. If indeed you have done our job, our people will acknowledge that, acknowledge that and give us the blessing to continue serving them. If however, we did not do enough to perform our mandate, then regardless, how hard we try to play with our position, it will only be a matter of time that we will be forced to go. Where worse, we will never earn the respect of our people. The fundamental component of institutionalizing the kind of governments we have always been fighting for. Ultimately, our work is beyond us, individual leaders. Our work is for the whole of the Bangsamoro, including those who will share perspectives with us. No amount of individual triumph will be enough. A significant if it does not ultimately result to the good of the whole Bangsamoro. Let us remember the sacrifices of those who have come before us. Let us honor our forefathers. The Magyar Hiddings and Magyar Hidder, whose blood, sweat and tears paved the way for the freedoms we enjoy today. And let us not forget that our strength lies not in our individual ambition or partisan allegiances, but in our unity as a people united by a common purpose. Our journey is not merely about legislation. It is a journey of the heart, a journey toward the Bangsamoro where hope, lives and dreams take flight. Together, let us build the Bangsamoro that is worthy of the dreams of our sisters and the aspirations of our children. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala grant us the Ta'awtik and guidance to fulfill our duties with excellence and compassion. And may it bless, to bless our endeavors for the betterment of the Bangsamoro people. Wa Billah, Taatik, Wal Hilayah, Wassalamu Alaikum, Wa Rahmatullahi Wa Barakatuh. I now give the prayer to our chief minister, Ahri Kalani Ibrahim, to deliver his address.
Allahumma rahim. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillahi wa bihilas sayyin, wassalamu wassalamu ala sayyidina muhammad. Wa ala alihi wa sahbi ayma'il. Our atas apnos respect and cortices to the newly appointed Wadi of the Bangsamoro. Sir Muslim Ken Jamadion. Speaker, Kalani Kalaniyan Bagendong. Calling senior Bangsamoro Tribunal Authority Parliament. Members of the cabinet. Friends and partners for peace and development. Our distinguished guests, secretary Khalil Al Besturor of the World of Health. And also the Assistant Secretary of Partner with him and his team. Friends and partners for peace and development, ladies and gentlemen, my fellow Bangsamoro. Wassalamu Alaikum, Wa Rahmatullahi Wa Barakatuh. Last February eight, twenty twenty-four. President Ferdinand R. Marcus Junior. Graced the seventeenth Intergovernmental Relations Body meeting. To express his appreciation of our collective achievements and reverberate his commitment to ensure the success of the Bangsamoro peace process. In his speech, he underlined the importance of our work, not just for the Bangsamoro and Mindanao. But for the entire country and his vision of Bangan Filipinas. He further emphasized that our work is better judged by the scorecards of the house's belt. Schools and students empowered, length of connections paid and families lifted out of poverty line, among others. Every green indicators that peace is winning. Indeed, the documents we signed and the laws we pass would be meaningless if this would not result to better living condition for our people. As such, allow me to share the points we scored in twenty twenty-three and highlight some of the legislative priorities of the government on the day coming into the last full year of the transition period. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the chief minister's report to the Bangsamoro. We continue to tirelessly fulfill our mandate. Reforms and behavioral change. A concrete result of this collaborative effort is reflected in our score in terms of poverty reduction. First semester, poverty incidence in the region was at fifty-five point nine percent. In twenty eighteen during the during the year. In twenty twenty-one, this dropped to thirty-nine point four percent. Making Bang the region for the most significant reduction in poverty incidence among families. In twenty twenty-three, we were able to sustain this momentum within a reported thirty-four point eight percent. A five percent reduction from the previous period. Though it may not be as big as before, it can be said that our strategies to lift more families out of the poverty line continues to produce positive results. One of the key strategies we applied towards this end is by providing free housing for the poorest of the poor families in the region. As of twenty twenty-three, we have turned over at least one thousand nine hundred sixty-seven housing units across the region. Courtesy of the Capianan and Pamaayanan, the Ministry of Human Settlement and Development and some from the Ministry of Social Services and Development. We also made sure that we ease the burden of paying the hospital bills of our constituents through the pertinent medical assistance programs of the Bangsamoro government. In twenty twenty-three alone, the Ayudang Medical, Melasa Bangsamoro Department or AMAG program has helped thirty-three thousand one hundred ninety-seven beneficiaries. Through its forty-five partner hospitals within the outside, within an outside the bank with more than seventy percent of them discharged without paying a single cent hour. MSSD also provided free hospitalization for five thousand sixty-four patients through its BIKAS program. In addition, a total of ten thousand five hundred forty sickling individuals availed three medicines from the seven pre-branches of mercury drug through the same program. This is on top of the four thousand five hundred twenty-five more vulnerable individuals who receive direct financial assistance for medication. We were also quick in helping those that are displaced by disasters and calamities. Programs and offices such as the Project Tabar, Vial Trading and MSSD served significant roles that led to our collective response to at least eight hundred forty thousand seven hundred ninety-six beneficiaries. This was done through various emergency response program and provisions for relief assistance and other quick response interventions. Recently, we have declared a state of calamity due to annual. Thirty-two thousand six hundred sixty-four point eight hectares have been damaged and at least thirty-one thousand nine hundred eight farmers are extremely affected. Directives were given to pertinent ministries and offices to provide necessary interventions to help mitigate the effect of the calamity to the most affected sectors of our society, the farmers. As of twenty twenty-three, the bank has provided at least one hundred twenty land ambulances, twenty cadaver transport vehicles, twenty sea medical ambulances, six mobile clinics and five vans that would help improve the medical response and services delivered to our constituents. The Bangsamoro government continues to personalize the much-needed upgrade in the level of government hospitals in the region. By providing necessary personnel, complement, infrastructure development and healthcare facilities. This was made possible by the legislations passed by the august body and we are currently contemplating on adding or upgrading other hospitals this year, Insa Allah. We all know that one long-term approach to help families out of poverty line is through banal education. We are steadfast in realizing our vision of having at least one professional per family in the Bangsamoro. Scores related to the vision is gaining momentum. A total of one million two hundred fifty-eight thousand two hundred fifty-three. Peoples and students are enrolled in various public schools, including government-accredited madaries, Islamic school and community learning centers. Moreover, the Ministry of Basic and Higher, Basic Higher and Technical Education, MBHTO, recorded a seventeen percent increase in our enrollment compared to twenty twenty-two. The Bangsamoro government also provided scholarship program such as the Access to Higher and Northern Education, AHME, in which one thousand four hundred qualified students across the region received thirty thousand pesos per semester for four years, subject to performance monitoring and adherence to the scholarship guidelines. We also provide scholarship to students taking up science and technology, technology-related courses through the Bangsamoro Assistance for Science Education Base and Base Merit Programs in which scholars receive a monthly stipend worth eight thousand and twenty thousand pesos respectively. As of twenty twenty-three, seven hundred four active scholars are included in the base program while the base merit program, on the other hand, has two hundred nine active scholars. Through these programs, we hope to encourage the Bangsamoro youth to pursue careers in science and technology, a field that is becoming highly important in the modern civilization. In twenty twenty-three, the bank scored at least three point one billion pesos worth of investments. Translating to one thousand nine hundred twenty-seven job opportunities. Investors are becoming increasingly confident in partnering with the bank. And for the first quarter of twenty twenty-four alone, the region has already registered three point seven billion pesos, exceeding its annual target by forty-two percent. The most recent of this investment is with Federal Airways Incorporated, which launched the Bangsamoro Airways on April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. The locally operated airline would provide flight opportunities connecting the various islands of the bank. At last, it will offer flights to and from Cota Mati, Chamboanga and Hulu with the possibility of adding euros and bigger flights in the future. The local airlines will also enhance tourism in the region. In, in twenty twenty-three, we welcome five hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-five domestic and one thousand three hundred ninety-four foreign tourists, which signals the growth in tourism sector and local industry as more people begin to explore the rich culture and unique beauty of the bank. There are now at least two hundred thirty-one tourist attractions across the region. The Bangsamoro government continues to empower its local government units through flagship projects. Twenty-two. Eight local government units of the bank were awarded with the seal of good governance, a good local governance, or SGNG. Ten barangays were held as search for model barangays awardees for exemplary governance. Seventy LUs obtained ideal functionality level after validation under the Local Government Functionality Operation Program. Forty-one LUs in the bank were declared as child friendly and two LUs were endorsed for presidential awarding. Four exemplary local chief executives were conferred with the twenty twenty-three Salamat Excellence Award for Leadership. Nine LUs were recognized for regional and three LUs were recognized for national Lu Kong Tagatag and Nomaya Pa incentive awards. As of twenty twenty-three, the Bangsamoro government funded two thousand six hundred eighteen kilometers of road with seven hundred seventy-three kilometers already completed, nine hundred to be started soon, Insa Allah. The Bangsamoro townhouse region also prioritize constructing and preparing one hundred ninety bridges. one hundred ninety bridges, of which seventy-three have been completed. Seventy-three are still ongoing and forty-four are to be built. It also funded two hundred sixty-four flood control projects with sixty-one comple- completed, ninety-two ongoing and one hundred ten in the pipeline. One hundred two water system level two units have been completed. One hundred twenty-one are being constructed and fifty-seven are to be implemented furthermore. A total of one hundred twenty-two slope and shore protection projects are funded, of which thirty units have been turned over already. Thirty-six are still being constructed and fifty-six are still to be constructed. The Ministry of Public Works also repaired and built twenty-two ports with twenty-nine still ongoing and thirty-five to be constructed soon. The Bangsamoro government distributed three hundred twenty-three barangai holes across the region as of twenty twenty three. Sixty-six of these barangai holes had been successfully constructed while two hundred fifty-seven are undergoing construction. Also excited is the construction of thirty-two public markets, six of which have been completed and twenty-six ongoing. Twenty-six municipal halls, six of which have been completed and twenty are ongoing. Nine municipal police stations with four completed and five ongoing. The region's various initiatives to address horizontal conflict resulted in one hundred thirteen redo cases resolved with continuing engagement so that violence would not be reemerged. The region also facilitated the reintegration of former insurgents and extremists through various interventions as the government continues to address the underlying factors that contribute to their susceptibility to being recruited in such activities. My dear colleagues, twenty twenty three was perhaps the most productive year we have had in terms of legislation. Several resolutions were passed and twenty-three laws were enacted. This August Valley was steadfast in passing the Bangsamoro Local Government Act that seeks to strengthen the relationship of the regional government with the local government units of the bar for providing framework for mutual empowerment that would hopefully redouble to the everyday benefit of the people. We have likewise passed the laws creating municipalities from the sixty-three barangays previously of Nok Tabate that opted to join the bar. P L C I was conducted in April three thirteen twenty twenty four to ratify the creation of municipalities of Pahamobing, Ol Cabatang, Malidigao, Tugunan, Ligawasan, Imbalatimbalakan, Kadayangan and Nagalawang. We recorded very high votes, voters turnout of eighty-one percent, in which ninety-nine point seven, seven percent voted for yes, showing the continued overwhelming support of our people. The importance of creating the eight municipalities cannot be understated as it completes the last few remaining passes for us to conduct the first parliamentary election in the region. Speaking of legislation at this point, allow me to share some of our priority agenda for calendar year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. Sir Speaker, my dear colleagues, we have already passed five priority codes. The remaining two codes, namely the Bangsamoro Review Code and the Bangsamoro indigenous peoples code, were already submitted to the August Valley. I am delighted that these are now in the second reading and it is our fervent hope that this be enacted as soon as possible, Insha Allah. We also need to pass legislations that seek to benefit the disadvantaged sectors of our society. It is along this line where legislation such as the Bangsamoro Labor Code, the Gender and Development Code, the Bhagwadhar Vosso PWD's theories in the bar and laws regarding the rights of the internally displaced person could make a difference as and as such, we earnestly request the imminent passage of these bills. The various ministries and offices of the bar are currently undergoing the technical value hearing as we prepare to submit the general appropriation act of the bar for fiscal year twenty twenty five. We also intend to submit a priority legislation that seeks to inter- inter institutionalize a robust fiscal management in the region through the enactment of the Bangsamoro Budget System Act. To further support the growth of our economy and sustain the record, record breaking investments, we shall likewise prioritize the enactment of pertinent legislations such as the Bangsamoro Investment Code and the Charter of the Bangsamoro Development Corporation. This will strengthen agricultural, commercial and industrial development that would hopefully translate to investment and job generations, Insha Allah. I am optimistic that despite the looming election session, this August Valley will exert the same level of ef- efficiency and productivity in passing these important legislations. All things considered, ladies and gentlemen, our scores suggest that we are indeed winning the piece and the momentum is on our side. However, the battle is far from over. Nonetheless, I am hopeful that together and with the continued guidance and blessing of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, we will come out victorious, Insha Allah. Ladies and gentlemen, this year marks the tenth signing anniversary of the Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsamoro. And as part of this year's commemoration, President Ferdinand Marcus Junior visited Kampabubakal last month. Kampabubakal, as we all know, used to be the main camp on the More Islamic Liberation Front. It has witnessed the worst of wars, especially in twenty, in two thousand one. It is a place where several lives from both sides were taken. It is a place that reminds us of the permanent scars and deep wounds. But who would have thought that a president will be able to visit Kampabubakal again? Not to celebrate the thought they have won the war, but to honor the fallen and to look back at the gains of the Bangsamoro peoples' peace process. This may have been, have seemed impossible many years ago, but it happened. Kampabubakal is a concrete reminder that peace is empowering and transforming. This is just one of the many things we have experienced throughout this struggle that developed our sense of positive optimism and outlook alive that is likewise common to those who stay the course of peace building. There were several decisions that may have seemed wrong initially, but made sense in the long run. There were moments where challenges ahead appeared to be insurmountable, but somehow we came through. There were setbacks that seemed to drag our reverse or reverse the course of our journey towards peace, but we continue to trust forward. Indeed, this experience, experiences serve as testaments to the verse of the Holy Quran, Ayah, Vol. 71 and 5, eight, uh eight thirteen, the planner, but Allah also planner and Allah is the base of planners. Ten years ago, we signed the Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsamoro. It was certainly a momentous event that ultimately shaped the course of peace in the Bangsamoro. But not everyone was convinced by that. Several observers were saying that we will not reach this far, that we will not be able to have the Bangsamoro organic law enacted, let alone have the Bangsamoro women and the beating established. But here we are, writing the last chapters of the transition period and preparing for the first parliamentary election, Insha Allah. Ladies and gentlemen, my dear colleagues, this is the last full year of the transition period. Let us make the most out of the opportunity given to us. Let us continue to serve the Bangsamoro with pure hearts and sincere intention. Have a light of equal on the daya. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Subah. Shushan and Ajun. We will step on this footpath. I can never tell what's happening. It's a malabarism, you know, qualify down. And I'm stuck. Bad joy, you are. May the best of the brothers and sisters, they get to talk to each other. What is that? What is that? I live in Mauna, Kavalo, but oh. But where is he? Rukta Kalasal. There are two candidates, if I'll be watching members of the parliament in the process. The first class will be out here with the speaker and the supervisor. So now. The speaker and the. Pero Mauna, Kavalo, to. Right. You guiding them. No, but I'm just trying to say something. Oh, pero no, 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 no. Ah, the Magis, that is, okay, no. Ah. Okay, yes. Now, go down, muna, kayo mauna. Ah.